Hello, everybody. I will call the special meeting, the public hearing for finding the local necessity to order on Tuesday, July 2nd, for the village trustees. I'll call it "Order." And I understand in front of us, we have a motion to... Where was this? A motion to continue from a Mr. Speary. That we have that in front of us. Mr. Speary, are you here?
I'm here on behalf of Mark Speary. I'm the attorney at the Mark Speary and Wolles, along with Mark Speary.
Okay, great. Before I ask you, actually, before I ask you and everybody else in the audience about any questions or anything like that, I would like to ask that since this is a public hearing and we will be accepting evidence and testimony, that everybody will be able to raise their right hand and repeat a phrase after me that would be greatly appreciated. So if you all will do me, if anybody is anticipating to speak tonight, provide any testimony, please do raise your right hand and repeat after me. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Great, thank you. I will ask you if you have done that before you speak tonight. So, thank you for being here. And so again, I saw that you did give the oath, if you will. So with that, is there anything in addition to what we have in front of us that you would like to comment on, with regard to this motion?
We would just renew the motion. The notice is insufficient on constitutional grounds because we can't tell with sufficient certainty what's being taken and what the proposed project actually does to Mr. Colangi's property. The site plan was not included along with the notice of hearing, and it's inconsistent with prior site plans. So there's really a serious difficulty with assessing both the necessity which we challenge and the damages as to Mr. Colangi's property. So we would renew that motion and we would assert that this hearing is without jurisdiction, without proper notice.
Is there anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, great. And so from staff, Mr. Pierce, I saw that you also raised your hand with the oath. Is there anything you would like to rebut?
The notice was resented May 24th. Notice of the hearing was in the Essex Reporter, June 6th. We believe that all the estate statutes that had to be adhered to were adhered to.
With regards to some of the things that were brought up about what is being taken, the impact on the property.
Well, there's an improvement to all the properties that the road goes through. No buildings are being taken. We're actually, the vast majority of the road on the east side of the tracks is following the line of an existing driveway, until it needs to cross the tracks.
And so all of these were things that were included within notices, within meetings?
Yes, and it's what was called Alternate One in the scoping study that was approved by the trustees, 2011. And it shifted very slightly, so to say, actually slightly away from some of the properties, not towards.
Trustees, do either of you have any questions?
And in terms of other notices, public notices, Robin, public notices in newspapers and other local media, was that all taken care of?
Yeah, the trustees had two meetings to approve the scoping study, first February and then March, I think that was 2011. Then the Connector Road was put into the CIRCL alternative review. There were 13 warned public hearings for that.
Okay, 13 warned public hearings?
Yes.
And then in terms of this particular hearing tonight, this evening, was this adequately warned? When was this warned?
We believe so. The letter's on May 24th, and it was in Essex Reporter, June 6th.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing for me?
And so with the site plan, was that something that was included?
Yes.
Within notification to?
It was always included in the right-of-way package of terms.
In something that was provided to either the attorney and/or to the property owner?
Yes.
Okay. My only question for, for... My only question for Claudia Dean, if I may?
Yeah.
One of the comments that was made about not having jurisdiction. Can you confirm we have? Can you tell us if we have jurisdiction?
So I think if the, so the, I think the trustees need to assess whether they feel that there was appropriate notice given to the parties. And so if you're, however you decide on that issue, if you decide that there was appropriate notice, then there would be jurisdiction for the board to entertain, to continue with the hearing as scheduled. If you felt that there was not, the statute of procedures were not followed, then that would divest trustees of jurisdiction.
Okay.
If I may add to the record?
Hang on one moment, I'll make sure you have that chance. I just want to make sure that I take those two. So seeing that trustees have no other questions of the witness at this point, if there's something, if there's a rebuttal or another question that you have, yes?
Yes, and I just wanted to add that the fact that it may or may not be the same as an earlier site plan doesn't create compliance with the notice requirement. The fact that there is in fact an inconsistency leaves question up to the landowner as well as to us to properly assess what it is that's being proposed, what it is that's being proposed to be taken, and the impact on the property owners. Furthermore, the notice itself said merely a road, not the width, not the location in particular. The notice didn't come with a site plan, we in fact had to pursue it later. And so there really hasn't been sufficient notice to the landowner. The site plan, as well as the alternate one, I believe, was referenced, they are substantially different. There are additions to a driveway as well as a parking area. There is presumably a different impact on the overall arc and scope of the project vis-à-vis the impact on Mr. Colangi's. And the difference is difficult to assess with the information that we have available to us. Eliza Van Lep. I can leave my card with the board if you'd like.
Did you sign in?
I did. Yes, thanks.
Along with that, if anybody else in the public, if you have not yet signed in, please do so, because that would be greatly appreciated and helpful to us later on. So, Mr. Pierce, I may come back to you again. With regards to differences from Alternate One to what was finally approved, how are the ways in which, what were the ways in which the landowner was notified?
Alternative One was a schematic, and what it showed was the road on the outside curve, moving in more eastwards than it does currently. When we finally did design development, we took that eastward movement of the road out and just joined the curve up.
And so how would the property owner be notified of that?
Well, the plans that went to the property owner had to change. What the alignment you have now are the plans that went to the property owner, on which took two occasions.
Okay.
Once when we had you present that, and then when it was noticed, your plan sent.
Okay. Thank you. And the trustees have any other questions?
I don't have any further questions. I would say that I think that all the, as far as I can tell from everything I've seen, all the statutory requirements have been met. And I would make a motion at this point to deny the motion to continue from Attorney Speary.
I will second that.
Okay. So with a motion on the table, is there any other questions from the trustees on the motion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, great, thank you. Okay. So at this time, what we will do is we will have an examination of the premises. This will include a site visit. To do so, we are going to need to leave this room and go on a little walking tour of the properties that we are talking about, and of the road that is being proposed. So as such, we will vacate the room, and then we will come back at the end of the tour.
So that gives you a sense of the road. There are 11-foot lanes with bike lanes on either side, and the eastern side also has a sidewalk, with a small green string.
So the yellow paint here is the center, going to be the center of the road?
Yes.
This yellow paint you're walking to right now?
Yes.
About 100 feet.
It's marked.
The neon, the neon yellow, not the, the garde-berati yellow.
Not the orangish-yellow with the arrows?
No, no, no. From here, curves to the state.
So you see from here, it curves over to the state, just under the grass.
How wide are the lanes?
11 foot.
11 feet?
22 feet. Here in the weeds, that's where the center line of the road is, is it crosses the tracks?
And then from there, straight across?
Straight across.
Yep, straight across. And from there, it mirrors the, or mimics the line of the railroad curve, pretty much?
More or less.
Could you, could you come down here? So where, what are the, what are the boundaries that are impacted here in terms of railroad and other properties?
The real way, we're fine with the road, and build property to this side, but that's it.
If there's a parking area on the map, where would that be vis-à-vis the open street?
The parking area is on the railroad right-of-way. It's something they gave us to offset parking, they took away up there.
And the driveway that is on the map, where is that located?
It's located approximately where we're...
And where is the curbing located?
The curbing is at the edge of the bike lane.
On all exterior boundaries of the roadway?
Yeah, the two exterior boundaries, where the, where the bike lanes stop.
Is there a traffic management plan for the driveway that's planned for this area?
During construction?
For the permanent use of the property.
You mean in terms of stop signs?
Required lanes, stop signs, what the turning radius is?
Yeah, I mean, this is a federal project that has to meet federal regulations in terms of design and construction.
We want to kind of reserve questions for when we get back, so that we don't have testimony going on on the site walk, should just be for pointing out where we are and we reserve cross-examination for...
I'm not actually, I'm not actually intending on testifying. We legitimately don't know vis-à-vis the property where the expectation is, is for like where the lanes are going to go, how far out into the property they're going to extend. So I'm not trying to like testify or be a part of the record, I just, I'm actually wondering.
Yeah, no, I think if you have like questions as to where things are on the ground, I think to the extent that they can best answer it, I think we should just be pointing things out. But in terms of like any cross-examination of Mr. Pierce or anyone else, I just want to reserve that for back at the, back at town hall.
And I think it's helpful, Rick Hamlin, so it's helpful to understand that Mr. Colangi's property essentially runs along the edge of the pavement. Right now, we're standing on railroad property, and when we show the plans, you'll see the different segments of the right-of-way and how the roadway alignment will be. So we'll actually show that graphically to you. But Mr. Colangi's property essentially ends at the limit between the grass and the pavement.
Very good approximation.
Where railroad decide, and as soon as we start on the pavement, we're essentially on Mr. Colangi's property, and the impact so then is from that edge of grass. And then as we move toward Maple Street, Mr. Knox's parcel runs right along the side of the garage closest to us, and so that's where the impact to Mr. Colangi's property will terminate. We'll, we'll point that out, but just so you can visualize when we have the plan up, the grass and pavement is that edge between railway and Mr. Colangi's. The proposed parking that is on railroad, actually on railroad land is approximately where that van and trailer are. Mr. Colangi's has requested his curb cut to be approximately here, and we'll show that on the, on the plans. And again, we can show you the full diagram inside. So that the area that we're impacting is the pavement, the trailer are, and I'll point out when we get in where the parking is in relationship with that location. So just look at that. And then again, as we walk forward, pay attention to the barrier, the difference, the transition between the grass and the pavement. That's as we walk off railroad lands and onto Mr. Colangi's property.
And so from that stake to the other stake that we were at, essentially straight line from stake to stake, 11 feet?
No, it's a curve. And we'll, we'll, again, we'll show that. The majority of that curve is actually here on the railroad property, and as we get onto Mr. Colangi's property, we tend to straighten out and onto the alignment of the existing driveway to the intersection with Railroad Street.
Okay, thank you.
That stake that we were just at, the center line comes through, and then the center line goes through the bright yellow mark just off the edge of the pavement.
Just to the right of the grass.
Just to the right of that utility pole. And about where the arrows are is approximately where Mr. Knox and Mr. Colangi share that common property line. So again, our impact, so, the railroad right-of-way actually is right about where I'm standing. Railroad right-of-way passes just past the end of the red building that you see behind you. So right now, I'm on railroad right-of-way land, and now I'm on Mr. Colangi's property. So that, again, if the trustees would just look at that building and see that alignment, we can point that out when we're looking at the plan. So you'll note the spaces that we're standing on here are actually on the railroad side of the road.
Thank you.
Be an additional 20 parking spaces, public parking spaces inside this hook of the, so if you look here, this is where those parking spaces will go, and we'll point those out to you on a site plan during the hearing.
An additional 20, 20 parking spaces right here?
That's correct. Again, public spaces, open door. The limit between Mr. Knox's parcel and Mr. Colangi's parcel is here. It runs roughly within a few feet of the edge of this garage. So if you stand here and look down and look back, so, when we stood back, I was telling you that it was the verge of the grass and pavement. Well, it's really the edge of this pavement as I'm standing straight back to the red building. Mr. Colangi's is the limit of Mr. Colangi's property, and, and we'll show that in a plan, plan view. But this edge of pavement projected to the red building, to the right of it, railroad lands, to the left, Mr. Colangi's. And if I put my arm back over here, this is Mr. Knox. The next thing I'd like the trustees to note, if they would, is that from this point, the Crescent Connector continues along the alignment of Railroad Street. So the project starts on Maple, crosses the tracks, comes to here, and then continues on to Main Street, along the alignment of Railroad Street. And I just ask you to take a look at this view right now, with the two lanes and parking, because there'll be some discussion about that during the presentation, what that configuration looks like now, and what it'll look like, and how the ownership changes after construction. So just want you to look at that.
Okay, so we are back. Thank you, everybody, for the tour. Thank you to everybody who helped to provide the answers to those questions that we had out on the site visits. We shall move on to the reports of the public hearing for A, where presentations and testimony by staff and engineers. Are we having an engineering presentation first?
Yes.
So if those doing a presentation would like to come up and remind you that you did take the oath earlier, and you can come up to the...
Oh, you want the board, or you...
No, I just, I'll need access to the screen so people can see where I'm at there. I'll go wherever you would like.
I just want you in front of a mic.
That's fine. Can I may join you?
Yeah.
And once you are all settled, if you could also just identify yourself for everybody else who hasn't had the...
I already hit myself three times. I would come up in the lower today. Do you stand, you know?
Just look to your, just stay seated.
It's usually me that's almost getting killed by him.
You've been for a moment.
At your pleasure, Mr. President.
When you're ready. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Hamlin.
So I'll, I'll move around a little bit, but I'll, I'll stay seated for the moment. My name is Richard Hamlin. I'm a...
Well, then we don't get one. Oh, sorry.
Let me, let me know when you're ready.
I think we're good.
All good?
Thank you.
My name is Richard Hamlin. I'm a professional engineer. I'm also the village engineer, and tonight, my capacity is the project manager for the Crescent Connector project. So our, our goal this evening is to hold a necessity hearing. And with me this evening in the audience, obviously, the project design team includes Mr. Robin Pierce, myself, John Benson, John, would you raise your hand, from Du Boy and King, Brian Breslin. We've got Corey Mack from RSG. We have Andy DeFord, the V-Trans project supervisor, and Rob White, also from V-Trans, has joined us. Thank you, Rob. These are the folks that have been working on this project for many years now. So the next slide is just an overview. We just walked, for your orientation, we just walked from the Lincoln Inn, or from the Lincoln offices, offices on Lincoln Street here. We crossed the five corners, we came down, walked into the parking lot here, and retraced our steps. So here's the five corners. We'll be discussing Main Street, Lincoln Street, Pearl Street, Park Street, and Maple Street this evening, as we cover the gamut and information related to the Crescent Connector project. The set of rules that we're working under this evening for this necessity hearing can be found in Title 19 of Vermont Statutes, Highways. And so all of the process steps that are to be followed come out of that statute, Title So what we'll be asking you, the trustees, to do are to find on three things related to necessity. And the statute is clear that there are three things that you need to find have a positive impact on the population of this community. One is public good, the other is necessity, and the third is convenience. And so throughout the presentation tonight, if you could just kind of keep those three things, public good, necessity, and convenience in mind, it would be very helpful. And there'll be a couple of points where we'll remind you of those as we, as we move through the presentation. Can everybody see everything all set, everybody good? All right. So, first, a little bit of history. The project, the Crescent Connector project, has got a fairly lengthy history. And one of the first landmark elements that pushed the project from a concept into, into motion, in terms of the process of moving forward and ultimately having a design, was the completion of a scoping study. And that scoping study was prepared by the CCMPO, the Chinatown Municipal Planning Organization, and that was presented and completed in 2011. So, and that report was presented publicly, and comments were requested from the public and, and received. So, in the beginning, there were essentially two routes that the scoping study identified as potential routes for the Crescent Connector, southern alignment and the northern alignment. So ignore the red outline, which is the study area of the Phase A of the Crescent Connector, but there's a dark blue line and a light blue line. And so the light blue line represents a southern alignment, and the dark blue represents the northern alignment. So Alternate One, also known as Alternate One and Alternate Two. The northern alignment, Alternate One, ultimately selected, goes through the parking lot and just adjacent to the railroad tracks off Route 2A, through the McEwing Landhold lane, crosses the tracks, into the railroad property, then into Mr. Colangi's property, Mr. Knox's property, and then on toward Railroad Street. And so the area that we were walking on Mr. Colangi's property was right in here, right in this area. So, southern alignment, northern alignment, Alternate One, Alternate Two, and those phrases will come up another couple of times in the, in the report and the presentation. So, based on input from the residents, and especially the impacted landowners, what was selected was Alternate One. Two of the landowners felt Alternate One was a better choice. One of the landowners felt Alternate Two was the better choice, and ultimately, for many reasons, Alternate One was selected. So that's a little bit of background. So when you hear about Alternate One, Alternate Two, Alternate One, is that blue, is that blue route the ultimate lead, the ultimate selected route, concept route for the Crescent Connector. So, March of 2011, those alternatives were presented, and here is the minutes of the trustees' meeting, and I won't read through it. But in this meeting, you, the trustees, reviewed and made a motion to accept Alternate One as the proposed and accepted route. And so again, that was all done through a couple of public meetings, ultimately with your action to accept Alternate One. So, after that, the project moved forward after the scoping study. The next phase headed toward design is the preparation of an environmental assessment. And so the environmental assessment... Yeah, so, so first, Mr. Benson's going to set on the table right here the scoping study, which we'll offer into evidence for tonight's hearing. And then right behind that, he'll offer the environmental assessment into evidence. So those are for your future reading. Again, the EA was presented to the public, the EA was available for public comment, and public comment was in fact received. The EA is a very comprehensive document and reviewed many, many different elements of the Crescent Connector, and how they might impact traffic, air quality, noise, socioeconomic impact, historic impact, hazardous material impacts. So it's a very comprehensive report. And the ultimate goal of the EA process is to get a letter of finding of no significant impact. And so, in order for a project to continue, this letter, finding of no significant impact, also known as a FONZI, needed to be issued. And so, in 2014, the EA was presented to the public. Again, comments were received, and ultimately, after that process was complete, the FONZI, or finding of significant impact, was issued by the Federal Highway Administration. So that brought us a significant hurdle, and again, we're offering that letter into evidence this evening. That passed a significant hurdle that allowed the project to move into a design phase. So... So, this document, March 2014, since then, has been reevaluated, and Mr. Benson will put into the record the letter that states that this EA is still good and is still an active document that we may rely on. And so there was a reevaluation, and that documentation will be in the pile of exhibits we'll leave with you. So, again, public hearing, FONZI issue. Here are just some, just a few of the public meetings that were held, warned meetings about this project, where the public had a chance to weigh in. Local Concerns Meeting back in July 2010, Alternatives Presentation in February of 2011, the Preferred Alternative Meeting in March of 2011, where that Alternate One was selected, the Public Information Update in 2013, and then the public hearing on the EA on January 9th of 2014. And again, there's, the EA contains a full transcript of, actually, of that last meeting, should you be interested in. Okay, so, with regard to the project process, there needs to be, once we get through... So with regard to the project process, there needs to be, once we get through the EA process, we need to do preliminary design to know where the roadway is going to go. Permits need to be acquired. We need to, once we know where the roadway is going, we need to acquire right-of-way. And then from right-of-way, we go to final design, bid documents, and constructions. And currently, we are at the right-of-way phase. So one thing that I'd like to point out is although the list looks symmetrical, the timeline from scoping study, EA, through right-of-way is many, many years. The timeframe from right-of-way through the completion of bid documents is probably less than a year. Once we get right-of-way clear and go to final design of bid documents, that process will probably take less than a year to complete, and then the project will go to construction. So we are, we are very close to that goal line of where we're starting to prepare the final documents for construction. All right. So as promised, here's a large diagram of the layout that we are talking about, the Crescent Connector. The connector is divided into two segments, Phase A and Phase B. Phase A is from Park Street to Maple. Phase B is from Maple to Main along the current alignment of Railroad Street. And so here is, we can just point out now some of the things that we discussed in the field. If you can see, the new public parking inside the curve of the crescent is located right here. That's where those 20 spaces are going to be located. The spaces that Mr. Colangie was talking about in his parking lot, there are an additional 10 spaces that will be located right here. This is where the trailer and the box, the cube van, the white cube van are located. So right in here. So you can see, the other element is a curb cut and a driveway access to Mr. Colangie's property that's here. We actually, early on, the project had it here. He requested that we move it here. And again, it can be located anywhere along this alignment that Mr. Colangie desires. Again, Mr. Colangie's property ends right there, and we'll see this shortly. But again, the edge of the parking lot right here. So if you may recall, that yellow mark that was near the utility pool was very close to the edge of the pavement. Well, there is the center line, the yellow line, and that's Mr. Colangie's property to there. And then again, limited at the Knox parcel. So that's the overall view, starting on Park Street. This is the McEwing building. We're, Crescent Connector will depart from there. We follow parallel with the railroad tracks, and then we cross with a new crossing here, and then continue on to Maple. One of the things I'd like to point out at this point is that this crossing actually represents two very special elements with regards to the railroad. The first is that it is a new crossing. So to get a new crossing across the railroad tracks is difficult, and the railroad has agreed to allow a crossing there. The other thing that makes this somewhat special is that typically, the railroad requires new roadways to cross their tracks to cross their tracks at a 90-degree angle, or on a tangent if we're, or regularly if we're on a curve. In this case, they allowed us to skew the roadway so that we could pull the roadway up and tuck it up closer to the existing railway and get into alignment much faster with Railroad Street than if we'd had to come across with a curve, and then essentially a reverse curve, and then come back again. So by being able to skew that, by the railroad agreeing to that, you're able to tuck this curve up much closer and make our destination at Maple Street. So that represents some kind of special consideration by the railroad. So the next slide is the overview of the right-of-way plans. And every color that you see here represents a different type of easement or right-of-way. Some are slope rights, some are permanent easements, some are taking. And the area that we're going to focus on eventually is right in here, and we'll focus in on that in a second. But right now, I'd like you to recall when we were on Maple Street, and I ask you to look down Railroad Street and to observe the street and the parking. As you can see, this magenta area is a part of the railroad acquisition. Well, presently, the railroad company owns more or less half of Railroad Street and all of the parking. So as a part of this project, should it move forward, one of the things that will be resolved is that Railroad Street now will become completely under the control of the Village Vestix Junction. And the village will no longer have to pay fees for that area or be concerned about the railroad not renewing the lease for the portion of the street as essentially it would close the street off if they didn't allow that second lane. So as a part of this project, that's a key feature that we'll talk about a little bit later also. So I just, since we're out there and you looked at that, I just wanted to point out that this is another key part of this project. This is going to mean stringing out something that the village has actually been requesting the railroad since the 80s to be able to purchase or to take over, control of this parcel. And it's only now in 2019 that the railroad has consented to allow that to happen. So for, and the other piece that we're seeing here is that right now, all of the properties that had appraisals done have either signed a deed or a letter of intent to close with the village and to allow the construction of the project, with the exception of Mr. Colangie's property. And so all of the appraising properties are complete of the four, and we're down to just the one. So for this evening, we'll focus on that particular one. So again, Park Street, Maple Street, and we're going to start looking at this area. So here's the right-of-way plans for Phase A of the Crescent Connector, Maple Street, or Park Street, Maple Street. We've walked through this parking lot here. The building that we were looking at, the red building, was down in here, so this will help orient you. And then let's move in one more step and look specifically at the area that is Mr. Colangie's holding. Here's a closer view of that drive access into the parking lot, a closer view of those 10 parking spaces, and a better view of those 20 new spaces, all public parking that will be available to anybody in this area who wishes to park there. Going back to the right-of-way plans, let's focus now on just Mr. Colangie's piece. So in here, there are one, two, three, four, five, six parcels that have different types of easements on them that were requested from Mr. Colangie's. So the table that you see in the slide discusses each one, and permanent and temporary. And so let's focus first on the permanent easements. And we'll start right from the top, and if you've got that slide in front of you. So the first is a drive easement, and that's 3,988.25 square feet. And that easement is the purple area right here. No changes to the parking lot, no changes to that area. What that easement is for is to allow access from the Crescent Connector through the drive, the curb cut, so that the public might pull into one of these parking spaces. The magenta that you see above the line is actually the taking from the railroad. So all the parking spaces will be on land that comes from the railroad, and only the drive aisle will be from Mr. Colangie's. And again, that's the existing drive aisle that's there now. So that's the first. That's a permanent easement to allow access to those parking spaces. So the next permanent is highway, and that's 2,679.44 square feet. And that's represented by this light blue circular edged portion. And this is where the roadway will actually be built. And so this is, you can actually see on your plan, the edge of the road, you can see the sidewalk, and the right-of-way will be just outside, the final right-of-way will be just outside the edge of that sidewalk. So we're working our way down through, we'll come back to the two temporary. There are two more permanent easements for lighting of nine square feet and approximately seven square feet. And there are just two little bump outs here and here to allow the streetlights to be located behind the sidewalk in this area. So that's about 16 square feet to allow the streetlights. So that encompasses all of the permanent. The temporary represents slope, which is the yellow. So this is allowing the project to regrade that area of Mr. Colangie's property to ensure that there's proper transition between the roadway and his property so that the grades are all smooth and we don't have any big step-offs with grade. And then behind that, there's another temporary easement for construction. This is an area that construction equipment and construction workers would occupy during the construction, but once the project was over, this area temporary, this area temporary, the village would retain no rights to that after construction was done. So in summary, there's 6,684 square feet of permanent and about 2,502.4 square feet of temporary taking that we're looking at for this project. The permanent represents about 2,062 acres. So any questions before we move on? Everybody good today, following along?
Thank you.
All right. So just as a reminder, as we move on to the next set of history and documentation, public good, necessity, convenience, those are the three benchmarks, mileposts, that we're asking you to consider what we're presenting to you this evening and to use those as the scale of balance against your finding of necessity. All right. So in the, in both the EA, the environmental assessment and the scoping study, there was a purpose and need description for the project. And the purpose and need provides the target essentially in words of what this project should achieve if it's going to be successful. And I will, I don't really like to do this, but I will read from the slide here. "The purpose of the proposed action is to facilitate regional travel to, from destinations southeast and northeast of the village, as well as improve local circulation in the village center, improve safety, and enhance opportunities for economic development and employment growth within the village center. The need for the proposed action is based on the current levels of traffic congestion that exist within the village at the five corners intersection, which result in extensive vehicle delays, traffic volumes exceeding capacities of the adjacent roadways, disruptions to adjoining businesses, and a high vehicle crash rate for a portion of the adjacent roadway. In addition, there are properties located within the village center and along the NECR lines, rail lines, that have not been able to be more fully developed due to lack of suitable accessibility." So purpose and need, and so the next portion of the presentation will focus on those elements of the purpose and need. Regional travel, local circulation, safety, economic opportunity. And so the next slides will focus on those key elements so that you may weigh whether the project does in fact meet the purpose. All right. So with regard to regional travel, the first benchmark was our goal. We'll go back to the layout plan here. Here is Route 2A, also known as Park Street, Route 15, Main Street. Presently, if traffic is moving northbound from 2A going northbound on Route 15, and a freight train comes through the village and heads toward the Burlington branch, this track is closed, this track is closed, and this track is closed. All of the traffic now moves through the five corners and then out Route 15 is occluded by the train at these crossings. With the Crescent Connector in place, they will actually be able to bypass and continue northward on the Crescent Connector route. So one of the regional impacts for this Crescent Connector is to allow northward and souther traffic movement to occur even though there's a freight train blocking the tracks through the village. And to some extent, also the Amtrak train blocking this crossing when they're parked at the station as the control arms are down. So that's, that's part of the regional impact of the project. Terms of local circulation within the village center, the EA contains pages and pages and pages of traffic study, which are certainly available for reading, and you may have already reviewed them when the EA was presented previously. I'm not going to go through level of service or delays turn by turn by turn, but in your package, you can see mainly there were four conditions that were examined. An AM peak, no build, so the morning, morning peak hour, if nothing gets built, the PM peak, if nothing gets built. And here with this bigger slide, I'll just point out to you, you know, what you're seeing over here in terms of LOS, which stands for level of service, F, 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 E, F, F. So this is the five corners overall F, so this is in 2015, so that's actually behind us, 2025 in the future, PM peak, no build, F. So the next page, this is a continuation of that sheet with the additional streets. So the no build summary says that if nothing gets built, in 2015, we're at level of service F. And again, if nothing gets built in 2025, we are still going to be at level of service F. And so no improvement, and level of service F is an unacceptable level of service in intersection passage of vehicles. In addition, intermittent train traffic would exacerbate congestion during peak hours. So this is a direct finding right out of the environmental assessment. The next table that you see is the intersection level of service with the Crescent Connector, AM peak build, and then again, 2015 and 2025. Again, I won't go through this, we'll get right to a summary. AM peak, build, and then PM peak, build, PM peak, build, continued. And the summary is that about 650 vehicles in 2015 would use the Crescent Connector total for both directions, reducing that amount in the five corners. In 2025, vehicles using the roadway would increase slightly. And then both in 2015 and 2025, traffic at the five corners intersection would be reduced as a result of the preferred alternative, and again, that's alternative one that we've been talking about. As evidenced in the review, vehicles delays improved LOS shown on Table 3.2.4, which is what we were just looking at. So forget level of service for a moment, just step back. What we're talking about is with, under build conditions, we go from a delay of 93 seconds in 2025 at the five corners to a delay of 63 seconds. So that's a 30-second reduction in wait times at the five corners. So whether you understand level of service E or F, really doesn't make any difference, but 30 seconds is a huge amount of time in the cycle time of the five corners. So in terms of local impact, certainly the construction of the Crescent Connector will make improvements. Now, we want to be clear that the five corners, you can think of the five corners right now as a heart with a lot of congestion. And the solution for that with these clogged arteries is to put in bypass. And that's exactly what we're doing here. We're creating a bypass. This Crescent Connector is another connection that goes around the five corners, just like heart surgery. So will this make us Olympic athletes and renovate our heart? No. But will it give us longer lifespan for the heart that we have, this core, this five corners intersection? Absolutely yes. All right. So another impact that was reviewed is air quality. And how this is impacted is the faster we move vehicles through the intersection, the less impact there is to air quality. And you can actually see, let's move right to the 2025 table, which is on the right-hand side. There's a no build and a build, and then a percent change. And so with the Crescent Connector, we have improvement, for example, of CO2, of a reduction in 21%. So we have a reduction in VOCs of 21%. So, you know, we're looking at, and also a reduction in the loss of energy, so of 21%. That's fuel wasted as vehicles are parked. So with the Crescent Connector, we actually increase air quality and reduce some of the harmful emissions that we might expect from those vehicles idling for those extra 30 seconds. seconds at the five corners. All right. Safety is another one of the categories in the needs and purpose statement. Clearly, we're going to reduce train-vehicle conflicts by creating this new crossing. Vehicles that previously had to cross at least two crossings now may only have to cross one. And so anytime we can reduce the number of times a vehicle crosses the tracks, that's an important safety implementation. Improved pedestrian accommodations. We have what I would refer to as the old kind of historic part of the village, which would be Mansfield Church, Pleasant, East Street, McGregor, Arlington, Elm. On one side of the tracks, we have the new residential development that takes place in where the NECKI educational facility was, so we've got all the new residential units there, plus the Indian Acres development. And right now, there's really no good connection between those two unless you walk all the way to the five corners and then all the way to down Maple Street or Park to go to either of those. People cut crosslots now, there is shorter routes, but it means cutting across private property, it means potentially crossing railroad tracks, unsignaled intersections. It's not safe, and again, people are walking across private property. With this Crescent Connector, there will be a direct link between Maple and Park that will allow pedestrians and bicyclists to make a connection between those two routes without having to pass through the five corners. As a part of this project, all of the highway rail crossings will be improved, and they're going to be improved in multiple ways. But with regard to safety, all new signals. For the first time on many of our intersections, we're going to have controlled gates that prevent vehicles from crossing while the train is on the tracks. And not only will we have gates for the traffic, but also pedestrian gates to keep pedestrians from crossing while the train is approaching or is crossing the roadway. And last but not least, the crew street lighting. As a part of the Pearl Street, both phases of the Pearl Street work, the Lincoln Street work, the Park Street work, the upgrades to the five corners happened many years ago, each of those projects has brought the street lighting up to its current level. And I think if you remember what our streets looked like before those streetlights were installed, very dark, very hard to navigate at night if you're a pedestrian. And so along with all of this new roadway will come improved street lighting, so not traffic signals, we will also do that, but also street lighting. So new signalized intersections, those signalized intersections will be at Maple Street, they will be at Park Street, and those intersections will have pedestrian activated signals, so you can cross two, three, all seven. So that's safety. So just in summary, reduce train-vehicle conflicts, so those conflicts occur here, they occur here, they occur here. We're going to reduce those conflicts by allowing some of the traffic to avoid those crossings. Pedestrian accommodations, so you'll be able to walk on a cement concrete sidewalk from Park all the way to Maple, all the way to Main on new sidewalk, or bicycle in designated bicycle lanes, which will be wide, again, that will connect you between Park and Main. So railroad crossings, again, we're going to summarize those actually later, I'll give you a point by point of those improvements to be, and the street lighting. So all new street lighting from Park all the way to Main Street. The other piece that's very important about the Crescent Connector was designed and will be built to village scale. And so much discussion occurred very early on in the project on how to make this project fit within the village. And so one of the things that we talked about on the sidewalk is that the travel lanes are 11 feet wide. Typically, roadway such as this, it wouldn't be unusual to have those lanes to be 12 feet wide. And we said, look, within the village, with the traffic that this will carry, we believe 11 feet is a better choice, and the four-foot bike lanes and the five-foot walk to mimic some of our other streets and to make the least amount of impact on our neighbors as possible. And so it was designed very much to be, to fit in with the village and not be a part of just processing traffic through the village, you know? And I know the trustees have had this conversation before, but the counterpoint to this is the proposal that we've seen in the past, to start at the Williston line and create four lanes in both directions on Park Street to get rid of on-street parking and just become a throughway to process vehicles through our village core. That concept was rejected with the Crescent Connector. So this is village scale, village speed, and suitable for all users, not just traffic passing through. So enhanced opportunities for economic development and employment growth. So this was another one of the goals. We had lots of input on this, this is a great letter. This came from actually Mr. Clangies himself, and I'll just read here the second paragraph. "I believe that alternate one would be best for my property. My plans are to keep this as a rental property, and I feel that alternative one would give me the best exposure to the new road and would greatly increase the stability of my tenants, of its commercial tenants on the property." So here's an adjacent landowner saying, "I like alternate one, I think that's going to be helpful and make my leasing of these buildings to commercial tenants make it more stable." And he continues, "Let me know if there's anything that I can do to move this plan along, as I feel this new road should be built as soon as possible." So this is Mr. Clangies, December 28, 2010, and this was offered up as a part of the scoping study comments. You'll find a copy of this, actually, I think we have a copy in the exhibit, but you'll also find it in the appendix of the scoping study. All right. So environmental consequences to socioeconomics, kind of a big mouthful. But essentially, what the EA requires us to do is to look at this alignment, this construction, and how is it going to impact, or will it impact, any particular socio-economic group? Does it advantage a certain group? Does it disadvantage a certain group by construction? Are we looking to move or have to relocate a certain group of folks in a certain socio-economic group? And so the EA found, implementation of the preferred alternative introduces the potential for longer-term economic development by providing improved accessibility to existing, underdeveloped properties that would be better positioned for future redevelopment or rehabilitation. There are no changes anticipated population data as a result of the preferred alternative. And so here's two findings. One is we are not going to have a negative impact, but will have a positive economic impact. So again, in terms of purpose and need, here is right out of the EA, and it has been accepted by the Federal Highways Administration. All right. So back to the location that we're talking about and Mr. Clangies. And just west of Mr. Clangies' property is this new crossing for the Crescent Connector. We talked about it at length. Now, this is a very special new crossing and not at a 90-degree. So let's talk about what, beyond the Crescent Connector, will happen as a part of this project. This is a single plan sheet from a big plan set that's going to be offered up as an exhibit and will be placed on the table, which includes all of the current railroad plans and both signal and track improvement plans. So let's talk a little bit about what happens. So again, here we are Essex Junction, we are right here, we have Maple Street, Park Street, Pearl Street, Lincoln Street. So improvements to the railroad. Very first is going to be on Central Street Crossing, so this is right near the Rail Depot, right near our train station. And it's going to be new concrete panels put in the surface. So if you've been in the village for any amount of time, you know that we've gone through paved surfaces, we've gone through rubber mat surfaces that were great when they were first installed, but don't last very long. And then in some of our crossings, the new concrete panels have been used and they're much preferred, they seem to hold up much better and ride much more smoothly. And anyone who drives, commutes on Park Street knows what it's like to cross the existing track crossings that have deteriorated. So a new concrete panel, so that's the Cadillac crossing panels, improve signals, gates, including pedestrian gates, and improve signage. So that's central. The next improvement will be at Main Street, concrete panels, improved signals, new gates, pedestrian and vehicular, improved signage, and another gate on Railroad Street. So if you may recall, if you're driving down Railroad Street toward Main, when the gates close currently on Main Street, some of the only gates that we have in the village, there's actually a clear shot from Railroad Street across to Railroad Avenue, which is an unsafe maneuver. So with this project, there'll be an additional gate on Railroad Street to prevent that cross traffic from shooting across between those open gates on that skew avenue. So that's Main. On Maple, concrete panels, improved signals, new gates, pedestrian and vehicular, and improved signage. Moving on, we've got the new crossing, so again, concrete panels, new signals, new gates, new signage, a whole new crossing for the village of Essex at the junction and probably the first new crossing since the turn of the century, the Essex Junction. All right. Moving on to Route 2A, this is Park Street North, the crossing closest to the five corners. Again, new panels and everybody who commutes on 2A will be thankful for that. Improved signals, new gates, improved signage, and the same for Park Street South. So recently, the railroad removed the second set of tracks, the old tracks that went to the GE warehouse, Coca-Cola, Essex Department Building. And so that crossing will also get the same upgrade as all of the others. And not to be left out, South Summit Street. So improved concrete panels will be installed there, the signals there are relatively new, but that crossing surface, again, if you drive South Summit, you will appreciate the new concrete panels. On top of all of that, this project includes a rebalancing and reregulating of all of the track under this dark red line. So essentially, starting beyond the storage building off Central, we go all the way just past South Summit, and we go way out past the village garage area here, including the Y. All of the track will be rebalanced and raised, and that helps railroad operation, but it also improves the signal transmission of their warning and control devices. Right now, the tracks and balas are getting into the subgrade where there's a high moisture content, and it disrupts their signals for their communication and control equipment. So all of that will be raised as a part of this project. So it's a very significant improvement just for the railroad as this project moves ahead. All right. So beyond the actual physical signal improvements of new signals, new signal heads, new controllers, new rail signals, new crossarms, those two elements don't exist in a vacuum from each other. We all know that if a train comes through the village, we must accommodate it with our traffic signals, and so there has to be coordination between the railroad and between our vehicular signals to make sure that one isn't saying, yes, it's good to go, and the other's saying, no, you need to stop. So as a part of this, and this is a huge project, very complicated, RSG is the lead on this, and they're doing a great job, is the coordination of rail vehicular signal systems. So if there are multiple possibilities, multiple combinations of logic that must be addressed, and that will be done as a part of this, and all through a single controller here at the five corners. Preemption for safety vehicles, all of the new signalized intersections will include preemption, so that emergency vehicles within the village, police, fire, rescue, can essentially allow traffic to push through, to allow emergency vehicles to clear an intersection. So preemption is a part of this project. And Park Street cue detection. So this is something that's a little bit odd and probably not something you're familiar with, but something you're definitely familiar with is occasionally on Park Street, a very regular occurrence, traffic backs up from Park Street into the five corners, blocking the Pearl Street lanes. So when Pearl Street gets the green, they cannot advance because traffic has blocked the stop bars of Pearl because traffic is hanging out of the five corners because something has happened downstream to stop that traffic. So the Park Street cue detection will actually be a camera or a sensor that'll be mounted on Park Street, and as those vehicles start to back up toward the five corners and get to a point where they might occlude the five corners and stop traffic from Pearl, it'll release southbound traffic on Park Street to allow that traffic to clear and keep moving. It won't solve all the problems, but it will at least allow the northbound signals, the traffic in Williston will be shut down, will turn to red, and everything green, southbound, will be allowed to be released. So that's Park Street cue detection. All right. So costs. This is a certainly near dear to everyone's heart. The base project is funded 81.08% by the federal government through the Federal Highway Administration and 18.92% through the state through VTrans. There is no local match. So there is no match, the percentage that the village must pay for the core of this work is zero. The only payment that the village will make is anytime where the village wants a special provision, instead of a plain Jane lamp, maybe something a little fancier perhaps. But the amount of expenditure from the village is very, very slight compared to the overall project, which right now is currently estimated at around $7 million, all right? So $7 million is the rough number we're working with right now, and probably almost $2 million of that is railroad improvements. So to date, $1.85 million has been expended towards this goal. So of the project, this is construction cost plus there's the design cost, so this is just construction alone, it doesn't include the design phase. But to date, $1.85 million has been expended, and we'll get to why that's important in a moment. All right. So consequences if the project is not built. What happens if we don't build this project? Well, first off, and it's not even listed here, but I want to make sure we get it on the record, is if this is not built, we do not acquire the other half of Railroad Street. So without this project, we don't finish with the railroad, the railroad does not allow us to take control of half of one of our streets, and it still belongs to them, and they can do as they wish and charge us as they like for it. So that's an important thing to remember. Traffic levels of service will continue to decline, there'll be no improvements in traffic levels of service, it will decline, will remain at F, and that F will just get longer and longer and longer. No safety improvements enacted, so we won't have any of the safety improvements benefited by the new signals, new pedestrian accommodations, bicycle improvements, the lighting improvements, no rail improvements, crossings or track, and no improved environment for economic development. So this, as the EA mentioned, this new roadway sparks and makes possible new economic development that is not available without it. So without this, a lot of economic development that would provide infill and development within the very core of our village would be greatly retarded. Would it never happen? We don't know, but certainly this helps to accelerate it greatly. And the village must repay costs expended to date. So if we don't move ahead with this project, $1.85 billion, the state will come back and ask the village to repay all of those costs if the project is to be abandoned. So that's a very important feature to consider. So in summary, again, what we're asking you, the trustees, to find is that with regard to public good, necessity, and convenience, this project has met the goals of the purpose and need, and you can find positively under these criteria of public good, necessity, convenience that are outlined in the statute, Title 19. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hamlin. So as we go through this process, I just want to be clear on how this is going to work or how this, questions will work. We will first have the trustees have an opportunity for questions. After we have finished with our questions, we will then open it up to anybody from the public who would like to have any cross-examination. Again, for all of those requesting cross-examination, please confirm with me whether you have or have not done the oath as I did at the beginning of the meeting. If you have not, do that again. If you're unsure, we'll just do it again for things that are basically covered. I ask that as you have questions, please make sure you address them to me, then they can be addressed to our witness at the time. So with that...
Could I just enter a couple items into the record of what...
Yes, please.
...presented. So this is an actual copy of the presentation, so you have a copy of that. This is a set of the plans as they exist to date, which of course are still in the development process. And this is a copy of an email that we received from Mr. DeFord from VTrans that spouts out the amount of money that has been spent to date on the project.
Thank you. And just for the record, can you also say your name, please?
John Benson.
Thank you. And so again, trustees, this is just questions of Mr. Hamlin. I would open it up if anybody has any questions at this point.
Rick, and that was a great presentation, it was very comprehensive, and I really appreciate it. It was very comprehensive, and I really appreciate it. One of the things, and I know you touched on it, but this was also part of the CERC alternative program. As you know, Governor Shumlin initiated a program back, I think it was in 2012, for the four CERC communities, Williston, Colchester, Essex Town, and Essex Junction, to each submit a project as an alternative to, because he had decided to not go forward with the CERC circumstantial highway. And I just wonder if you could elaborate a little bit for me. Was that, in your mind, in terms of the value in all of the good things that you've listed here about this, was that like an extra set of eyes? Was that a separate vetting process that the Regional Planning Commission also brought to bear on this, or...
So...
Explain that a little bit.
Yeah, so this project was actually the very first. There've been multiple CERC alternative projects. So funding that was earmarked to build the circumstantial highway, again, that was the highway that would have gone from Interstate 89 in Williston through Mountain View Road, crossing 117 near the sewer pump station on River Road, and that would tie into what we now refer to as 289. And then that 289 loop would have gone to 2A, and then passed through the edge of the existing town landfill and paralleled Kellogg Road, and then ultimately ended up in Colchester. So the concept of the circumstantial highway, as you mentioned, through a couple of administrations, lost favor, and this project was the very first project offered up, approved, and granted, you know, given a push ahead by regional planning and the state to build this particular project as a Crescent, as a circumstantial highway alternative. So yes, the genesis of this project is the determination of that old project that we referred to as the circumstantial highway.
Thank you. And if I could just...
Yep.
...continue on that line of questioning. So with that being the CERC alternative project, was there then additional scrutiny on this project from the CCMPO or the CCRPC, depending on how that timing played out?
Yes, and so the scoping studies, in fact, this project was scoped, as you may recall, actually in two pieces. There was Phase A that was scoped individually and Phase B that was scoped individually. And then ultimately, those two scoping studies were melded together in the process. But the initial process was, you know, looking very closely at just one piece and then at the second piece. And so yes, I would say that this got a lot of scrutiny with regard to both funding, you know, at the state and at the regional level. And we have support letters, and I believe Mr. Pierce has documentation from CCMPO that they support the project even today as we speak and are still supportive of the project. I'll let him present that.
Yeah, we did get a letter from the executive director of the CCRPC. We also got a support letter from GNC in Wyoming. And during the CERC alternative process, when it came to voting, Williston, Colchester, Essex, Essex Junction, all voted for this project. Groups that attended most of the meetings for the CERC alternative process, which was thirteen months, included Conservation Law Foundation, Local Motion, a lot of conservation groups, and it was an unanimous vote when it came to the end of the project.
And I assume those letters you were referring to either are entered into evidence or will be entered?
They're in the pocket.
Thank you. Trustees, do you have any other questions?
I just wanted to shift for a second and ask a specific question about the Colangies property.
Certainly.
So is it safe to say, Rick, that the proposed Crescent Connector does not impact any of the parking spaces on his property?
So the answer to that is no. There is some impact, and so let me just point out, I don't know whether you can see this...
I've got the map.
Yeah, okay. So, so right here, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, perhaps ten spaces that might be impacted in terms of access, and certainly there's parking that could be reconfigured here. But assuming no reconfiguration, I would say that ten spaces are lost, ten spaces are gained, and then beyond that are the twenty spaces gained across the street. So within the parking lot itself, in terms of spaces identified and controlled and essentially we'll call them legal spaces, ten lost, ten gained, so for a net balance on Mr. Colangies' side.
Okay. Is there another question on that?
Not on that, no.
Okay.
And I should say, we have a two-step process. So tonight is the necessity hearing, and then the next hearing, should you authorize necessities, should you find positively, would be a compensation hearing, and that's exactly where that type of conversation should take place, is, you know, impacts to his property and its value.
Do you have another question, Amber?
Not sure. Well, it's not necessarily a question for Rick. I mean, Rick pointed out that if we don't proceed with doing this, so the Village is responsible for one point eight million dollars and paying it back to the state. So I definitely can admit that I don't know the budget that very well, but I'd say that we don't have the money to do that. And so my concern is, what happens if? What does that mean for the Village?
Correct. And with our total budget in excess of three million dollars, not by a lot, that would have a significant impact on taxpayers, for sure. So with regards to the necessity of the road, are there other questions?
Yeah, I want to just bear down a little bit more in terms of the economic development improvement potential of the road. So right now, on the road, as we walked over there, it's a dead end. It's basically, as we went in to turn off Maple Street and go down into that property, it's a dead end property. There's no other way out. You have to turn around and come back out. And here, we're looking at, and I know you probably can't, there's no way we can estimate how many cars per day are going to be going by the property now, but this will become a completely through area now.
Well, we know, at least, and there is traffic data in the EA, and one of the slides that's actually in evidence talks about over six hundred cars using this roadway in a peak hour.
In a peak hour, over six hundred. And even if they're not getting off, there are cars that are going by these properties. These are commercial properties, and they're going to be seeing these properties, and they have an opportunity to park or have access to these properties.
And the benefit is both on this side, and as you may recall, the queuing parcel on the other side of the tracks also was in the same situation. They had one access point, brought you into the parking lot, dead end, before they acquired the depot farm supply parcel. So again, this benefits all the parcels along this, all the locally owned, obviously not the railroad, they're the other boundary owner on the other side. But yes, we believe that there is a benefit to the property owners, and I think Mr. Colangies' letter back from 2010, 11, that we put into evidence says, look, this is a good thing. This will bring stability to my leaseholders.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Hamlin, with regards to the traffic improvements that you had mentioned earlier, you were discussing about how it would be approximately thirty fewer seconds with the creation of this new road. I assume that's largely because of the ability to not have to go around or to not have to wait for the train, should a freight train come through. Was that included with that?
So that's part of the way, but also taking vehicles away from the Five Corners, shortening those queues so that those vehicles can get through, so that the timing now could be shortened to allow that shorter queue, that platoon to make it through the Five Corners. So it benefits from many different ways. And again, you know, would it make the Five Corners a totally new experience for drivers? No, but you will certainly feel an improvement in the timing, the thirty-second difference. It's level of service E, which for an urban intersection, especially at five, one of the particular problems of our community is that our intersection has five legs. So it's not a four-way intersection, which is a much easier intersection to deal with. So because of that extra leg, we end up with extra timing segments to allow those five legs to operate and clear the intersection. So any traffic that we can remove from those legs, which this will help do, will help us alter the timing and make improvements in terms of the driving public that has to drive through the Five Corners.
And so in addition to that, within the calculated reduction in wait time, was the Park Street queue, I'm trying to recall the phrases that you used, the Park Street queue detection, was that also factored into the reduction?
No, so the modeling stands alone, irregardless of the queue detection. So the modeling was done, the queue detection is actually something that was brought up by Village staff and are working with the engineers in RSG as we got into the design elements. Because for us in the Village, we know that there are some very specific things that occur that you might not pick up in a traffic study. And so a traffic study done during the summer doesn't pick up, for example, Maple Street traffic when school's in session. And so the original counts were done in non-school time, and so we actually commissioned and had an additional set of counts to account for that 725 to 738 rush of people driving their cars to Lawton and coming back again. So that is accounted for. But the queue detection was later, and it doesn't really show up in the model. It's just a functional thing that we know as Village residents occurs that we passed on to the engineers so they could accommodate it the best they could with technology that's available.
So then there may be a chance that that reduction in wait time could have to be greater or an increased reduction?
I think what it's going to do is that the queue detection will help guarantee that the reduction in wait times will be achieved, you know? Because if there's a queue and the timing signal's safe for Pearl Street to release, it's green, and they can't go anywhere, obviously your delay is going to be, even though the light is green, your delay is there. So the queue detection is really going to help ensure that the projected delays are achieved. I think is the best way to put that.
Okay. Trustees, any other questions?
Just one more. If you could just elaborate, I know I was trying to follow all the traffic improvements, but I know because I live down on the other side of the track, so to speak, and I know that one of the problems in the morning are the traffic stacking up down Maple Street, and then people who want to take a left-hand turn onto Park Street see the green light, but they can't get to it because they're stacked. So how often have we seen people jump into the ongoing traffic lane, accelerate in order to get down there and take a left-hand turn? Now, this will provide a left-hand turn onto Park Street for that, so is this going to have an impact on that?
So if we look at the slide that I have here that shows the complete roadway, if you look at your slides that show, again, the roadway all the way from Park to Main, if you look at that slide, if you focus on Maple Street, one of the things you're going to note is that there is a single lane from Railroad Street to the Five Corners. So as a part of this project, the left-turn lane that would, those drivers that do, as you say, cross the tracks, passing illegally within seventy-five feet of the railroad tracks to try to make it into that green light and left, that left will be eliminated. All those left turners will now turn left to the Crescent. And so the queue that they'll be entering is prior to the tracks, so again, much safer. We won't have people standing on the tracks two cars wide now, as they often do in the morning. And so that left-turn lane and that rush to try to get to the left-turn lane at the Five Corners will be eliminated under this project, and all those left turners. And as you know, standing in line, the majority of the vehicles are going into the right-hand lane, it's a few vehicles to the left, and so those vehicles now be able to go into the Crescent Connector and go left on Park and avoid the Five Corners altogether.
Okay, thank you.
And the other thing that that does is by maintaining the curb limits, now we can have a bike lane that'll actually connect all the way from Park Street to the Five Corners. Right now, as you may recall, if you're riding a bicycle from the pool, from the recreation facility, by the time you get to Bushy's Automotive, that bike lane disappears. And oftentimes, what happens is vehicles queuing up, trying to make space for those people trying to get by on the left, encroach into the bike lane, forcing bicyclists onto the sidewalk, and it's a very dangerous situation. So now that bike lane will exist all the way through the intersection, all the way to the Five Corners, so that improved for bicyclists there also.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, so before I open this up to comments from the public, or not comments from the public, my apologies, for cross-examination of Rick Hamlin from the public, I want to just remind everybody that this is for the finding of local necessity. In regards to public good, necessity, and convenience, this is not that compensation hearing that was mentioned before. So please just make sure that your questions are tailored to the need of this new road for our community and not with regards to compensation. That can be done at another time. So with that, if anybody has any cross-examination, could you first please raise your hand so I can see how many people would like to? Okay, so two?
I think I'm on his behalf, so just one if that's...
Okay.
John? Would you give me one of the slide decks? Great, thank you.
So then if you would be able to just again say your name for the record, I do recall that you had done the oath in the very beginning, so we are all clear on that. Please go ahead and...
I don't want to be anywhere particular for the ease of the room. I mean, I won't be there for all that long, I'll think, but I just don't want to, just want everyone to...
They were saying, stand up?
Okay, okay.
Where are your humples there?
I'll sit, so I'm not sort of... You earlier directed me to ask questions to you and have you direct them to Mr. Hamlin. Would you like me to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Brown, to your knowledge, have these plans as proposed tonight and as presented ever been provided to the landowners or to the interested parties?
The answer to that is yes. I actually met with Mr. Colangies, I believe it was in May. Ron, you may be able to confirm that date. And at that meeting, I provided a set of both the project plans and also the right-of-way plans.
Specifically as to the Colangies' plan that we were focused in on earlier, excuse me for looking at both of you, but I feel a bit torn. That plan, to my client's knowledge, has not been seen by him nor has it been seen by his attorneys. Has there been any effort to distribute that plan specifically as it pertains to Mr. Colangies' property on a more granular view?
Go ahead.
Again, the right-of-way plan, as depicted here, was provided, and actually, the deed for the proposed takings, which has a complete description of meets and bounds, all of the areas, what the takings involve, has been provided for Mr. Colangies also. So that's a fully written description of survey-level detail of the proposed takings.
Would you be able to clarify in what format that was provided to him?
So the deed, the proposed deed for the agreement with the Village, there are paragraphs within that document that describe very precisely the limits of the boundaries, just like a boundary survey that meets and bounds various distances for the takings. So it's a very precise description of exactly what is involved.
And specifically, I apologize if you feel that I've already asked this question, but I want to be very precise as to the specific layout plan to the Colangies. I believe it said layout plan, comma, Colangies earlier on your presentation. Has that particular image been provided to Mr. Colangies or to his counsel?
So that image that we saw on the plan is a blown-up image of a much larger plan that he was provided with. So what we did is we started in the presentation showing the complete plan, which he received, and then we drilled into Phase A, and then we closed in a little bit more. And so was he provided that blown-up, very close-in view of his particular taking? No, it was the complete plan showing all the takings, both to the south and north of his property.
So there may not have been as close a focus on the parking easements as well as the other rights of way that were necessary for proposal?
All of those elements are shown in the plans. They're clearly visible in the plan. So at the scale provided for that segment of the right-of-way, so you can actually see the limit of the roadway, you can see the limit of the sidewalk, his curb code is clearly shown as that's... His curb cut is clearly shown, as that's part of the grading accommodation to match in his property.
Regarding the six types of easements that you mentioned for the Colangies' property...
So, there's actually six separate areas that are two different types of easements. So, it's not six different types, it's six areas, two different types.
Thank you. There was an assertion that there were, there was no changes to the parking lot made in the drive easement, as to the purple. There hasn't been a consideration of the use of the property currently in the fact that he currently has free use of the parking lot as it is. The proposed plan forces a certain use of the property and forces a certain access to the roadway as proposed. Has there been a consideration and an explanation of the expected access and easement path that would follow according to the requirements of law?
So, all of the project, as was mentioned in the site visit, will be designed in accordance with the MUTCD. That's the standard that the state has adopted. So, all of our geometry, all of our markings, all of our symbolization, everything related to this project must be vetted through the MUTCD standards and guidelines. With your specific question about use of the property, so currently, and part of this, I believe, is probably better held in the compensation phase of the discussion. But currently, the area that we're talking about, which is an access easement to gain access to the 10 new spaces that will be built at the edge of the existing parking lot, that area is currently used as a travel lane by Mr. Colangies. So, could that change? Yes, if Mr. Colangies came to the village with a revised site plan that said he wanted to relocate his parking, that would be something that the planning commission would have to review and ensure that it was done again in accordance with village standards. Because the village standards are very clear about minimum parking space sizes, also minimum travel ways within the parking lot. And so, the assertion that Mr. Colangies can really do whatever he like in that parking lot and configure it in any way has to be said with the asterisk, the caveat, that the village must approve of it, and it must be done in accordance with the standards, site plan standards of the village. So, what we're looking at is using an area that currently is a travel way to access parking spaces as a travel way to access parking spaces, so...
Changing gears slightly, and I will just briefly cite a statute 19 VSA 501. For everyone's benefit, it requires that the greatest public good be considered along with the least inconvenience and expense to the condemning property and to the property owner, and that adequacy of other property and locations be considered as well as effect upon home and homestead rights and the convenience of the owner of the land. I'm inquiring as to whether considerations and findings have been made on those principles.
And I think the answer to that is yes.
Sir, if I may, is this related to the findings of a local necessity?
Certainly, yes.
Into whether this is needed within our community?
So, the necessity, we are entitled to challenge on a constitutional basis. And so, whether or not these points of law have been considered are certainly relevant to the overall finding of necessity by the trustees. My next question was going to be regarding the placement of the roadway, and I'd be happy to ask those two questions together.
So, I mean, that's what we're doing here today. This is a necessity hearing. So, just to be clear, there haven't been any findings made by the trustees yet on the issue of necessity. I think that's what this hearing is about. And Mr. Hamlin's not making findings. The board is making findings on this issue. So, I want to make sure that what we're doing right now is inquiring of the witness about his particular testimony that he was presented, and sort of staying within that scope.
Sure, to focus the mention of the statute, I wanted to put the statute in the record as a relevant consideration for this trustee's panel. My next question was going to be the, I believe it was a 20-spot parking area located to the railway side of the proposed connector area. And so, my question is whether there has been any alternate consideration under the engineering approach as to whether the roadway could exist somewhere that did not take Mr. Colangies' property?
I'm happy to discuss that. And so, the answer to that is yes, there was consideration made. However, right now, the alignment that we're showing is the closest that the roadway can be pulled toward the tracks. And so, we're limited by two factors. One is the terminus, which has to be the intersection of Railroad Street and Maple. So, we need to enter that intersection, so we need to end the roadway there. And with regard to the crossing the tracks, the only way that the roadway could have been pulled farther up and impact, I'll say, less of Mr. Colangies' property, because even if we were to do that, there still would have been an impact of Mr. Colangies' property. It would have meant that the crossing across the railroad tracks, and as you may have heard me testify early on, this is a very special crossing for the railroad. They allowed us to actually skew our crossing very slightly and not cross the tracks at a 90-degree angle or on a radial line with regard to it being a curve. And so, because of that skew, that allows the curve to be tucked in a little bit more. One of the original proposals was to come across the tracks at a 90-degree angle, and it encroached much deeper and further into Mr. Colangies' property. And so, this was the best compromise that could be reached with the railroad and still keep within a safe angle for crossing. Because the more the angle increases between a vehicle and the railway, the more dangerous that crossing becomes because of the lack of visibility, both for pedestrians and for drivers of cars. So much so that in many locations, in urban areas where trains go through, pedestrians are actually required to approach the tracks, run parallel, move parallel with the tracks, and then turn 180 degrees to come back to force them to look in both directions because of the numerous cases of pedestrians being struck by trains because of the skew and not paying attention to what was happening behind them. So, this represents the very best compromise between minimum impact on the adjacent property owners, and that's all the owners, both Knox and Mr. Colangies, and a safe crossing that is permitted by the railroad and can be designed by the roadway designers and feel like it can be done in a safe manner.
Mr. Jair, could I just add something to Rick's testimony, or is that out of order?
At the end. Right, so at the very end of her questioning, you may.
I consulted Mr. Colangies, and that's my question to his witness.
Okay, thank you.
So, the only other thing I wanted to point out is, the question was about, were other alternatives considered? And as Rick pointed out, within the scoping report, other alternatives were considered. And other alternatives were considered within the EA document. And within the EA document, it identifies why those alternatives were not pursued or carried forward. So, it's not like this is the only alternative that was considered to meet the objectives of the project.
And let me just point out for the record again, because that first drawing with, if you may remember, the northern alternative and the southern alternative, the dark blue, light blue. Well, the southern alternative departed Park Street just to the south of the McEwing Building, came down, crossed the tracks, and then ran in between the existing buildings here, the red building that we looked at that I pointed back to, said, "Look along that edge", and then joined into the current alignment of the Crescent Connector. So, with regard to impact on at least Mr. Colangies' property, alternative B, or the alternate two, the southern option would have had a much greater impact on his property than the alignment selected.
Thank you, Mr. Hamlin. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to cross-examine the witness? Sorry, Scott can't see her behind you.
Okay.
So, hearing none, Mr. Hamlin, thank you for being here today. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
You are all set. Are there other, is there anybody else who would like to provide testimony from the staff or engineer perspective? Robin? Careful standing up, Robin.
I'm thinking, all the documentation that we gathered over the years for the project are in the packet. The trustees got, there's extra packets here at the end of the table. Included everything for the circle alternative, the scoping studies, emails that had gone and gone between ourselves and property owners meetings we'd had. And the fact that everything we did, all the warnings, were sent out according to statute, the tickets that came back from people who signed off, hadn't received the letters, and the notices. Everything mentioned those, and the fact that the June 6th Essex reporter had time speeding them.
Thank you, Robyn. Is there anything else?
Anything I can think of.
Okay. Trustees, is there any question for the witness for cross-examination?
No, I don't have any further questions for him.
I don't either. Does anybody from the public wish to cross-examine the witness? Probably to see anybody, okay. Thank you very much, Robin.
Thank you.
And was there anybody else from the staff or engineers who would like to testify today? Okay, so seeing none, we can now turn to public comment and public testimony, just so I can get an understanding as to how many witnesses we may have. How many people would like to provide testimony today? So, then, you may, you may come on.
The commentary here will be from Mr. Colangies. I'm going to be asking questions, or would you like him?
Mr. Colangies, if you would like to find a seat, give us a couple moments, not to be rude, Rick.
Let me clear out.
Robin. If, Mr. Colangies, if you would like to come up here and join the table, you are more than welcome to, as far as... So, then, if that's where you're comfortable standing, you are more than welcome to. If you'd like to sit next to him, you are more than welcome to.
I'm going to be asking questions. I better face them, so I guess the camera would probably prefer me to be next to him, so I can accommodate that.
Yes, and then, Mr. Colangies, I apologize. I do not know if you were here at the very beginning of the meeting when I had sworn everybody in. Were you here for that portion of the meeting?
I think I was, yeah.
Are you confident in that, or do you want to swear in again, just to make sure?
He was here, but I'd be fine if you wanted us to confirm his...
If you don't mind, I just couldn't see you.
No, not at all.
If you don't mind raising your right hand and just repeat after me, "I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth."
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you so much.
Did I get that right?
Yes, you did. If you'd like to take a seat, you are more than welcome to. It depends, that is up to you.
You can't see.
Kill myself.
You may proceed.
So, on behalf of Mr. Colangies, for the record, we are formally contesting the necessity of the plan based on its location as well as whether or not it does need to impinge on Mr. Colangies' property, noting that the notice was insufficient to put Mr. Colangies on proper notice as to where the plan would be on his property, based on the information that he has available and that he provided to counsel. Tonight was the first time that we actually learned where the road was planned for on his property. And there has been no further information regarding the requirements of state and federal law regarding traffic plans, easements, how that would actually affect, excuse me, not easements, but traffic plans and other requirements on the property, which would significantly impact the current use of the property, which is in fact servicing of large trucks on Bailey Chassis and Spring. Those trucks require a very wide terrain radius, and the impact would be complete on that business as far as we can tell. So, for the sake of the record, I want to make those objections plain. And I'd like to ask Mr. Colangies some questions. When was the first time that you learned what about your property would be taken?
The first time, I think it was about eight or nine years ago. I think we talked about that.
And did you write a letter of support at that time?
I did.
What was your understanding of the project at that time?
At that time, it was relatively simple. I looked at it, they had a name of the Crescent Lane, and it sounded like a kind of a small little road or something like that. And so, it sounded okay at the time, but again, that was nine years ago.
Did you understand that that plan would be taking any of the parking currently used on your property?
No, I did not.
Would that have changed your opinion if you had known that it was taking your parking?
Absolutely, absolutely.
When you received a notice on May 24th from the town, did that notice come with any clear plan regarding what the road noticed as part of the taking would be?
No, I did not.
Were you put under either explicit or implicit notice that there was any exact duplicate from the 2011 plans that you had been shown, and now, eight years later, the 2019 plans?
It's very different from what I looked at originally.
You heard commentary earlier that there really isn't a problem here because even though we're taking 10 spaces, we're giving you 10 more. Do you have a response to that?
Well, my response is, it's relatively, how do you say it? It's kind of funny. I mean, actually, the spaces, the places that they're taken online are usable, okay? And the other ones, really, I don't know, they came up with that idea, those eight or 10 spaces over there, I don't even know how they're going to get to them. But in any event, the other spaces that I have, especially in front of the Bailey's property, they're forgetting, there's no way to get to them. In other words, there's a painted space there, a parking space, but you can't get to it because the road is going to be right up tight against it. So, you need to have another space to drive there to get to the other, and it's almost impossible.
Would it be fair to say that you don't agree with the assessment of the loss of your parking done by the appraiser?
I don't, not at all.
Is there a greater parking loss than the one originally appraised according to your estimate?
Yes, it is, there was.
Regarding your tenant, what will the impact be on your tenant, Bailey Spring and Chassis?
On that one, it would, they wouldn't be able to function.
Are they, based on the trucks that are serviced there, would they be able to use the access to the road that's currently being noticed to you?
It would be very difficult, very difficult. I saw one of the maps, they only got a curb cut in there. And it's not necessarily in the wrong place, but it's not in a very good space. So, you won't be able, it wouldn't be comfortable, they wouldn't even be able to get to where they want to go.
Based on your observation of the property, owning it and having your place of business there, would those trucks be able to safely make that turn onto the roadway as proposed?
Not only that, I don't think that 11-foot width is going to be comfortable for truckers or larger trucks and all that. It's going to be very difficult.
Would you lose income as a result of the impact on your property?
I think so, yes.
The necessity is the subject of tonight's hearing. Is it your opinion that the project as noticed is necessary?
I don't believe it is.
Do you believe that there's a different location that the property could be cited?
I don't even think they would need... I don't even think they would need it anywhere. I can't think of another place to put that there, but as the years went by, you could see that, I mean, to me, it's a waste of money, the whole project. Too bad, but it's not going to make anything better for Essex Junction, I don't believe. My opinion.
See, I ended my questioning. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. In terms of cross-examination, we will use the same process of trustees, if you have questions, we will go first. From that, we will then open it up to anybody from the public who would also like to cross-examine the witness. So, with that, trustees, I will turn it over to us. Does anybody have a question to kick things off with?
Yep. Bill, in your letter, December 28, 2010, you said you've been reviewing the proposed plans, alternate one and alternate two, for a new road connecting Park Street and Maple Street. So, you were aware that this was a road, not a lane, that was going to connect Maple Street to Park Street, correct?
That's a tough one, Jared. By the way, it's nice to see you. I haven't seen you in a long time.
Good to see you too. But isn't that, I mean, pretty clear that you were aware it was going to be a road connecting the two streets, not a lane?
Well, not necessarily, no. Not necessarily. I don't think it was given, you know, Crescent Lane, to me, was like a little lane coming down through there. Now, it's like sidewalks, bicycles, the whole nine yards. And remember, this was nine years ago, almost 10 years ago, and I kind of actually forgot about it. And for somebody to bring that up now and not even make it sound like it was yesterday, no, it wasn't yesterday, it was nine or 10 years ago. And I just looked at it as a very small operation at the time. I never gave it that much thought.
And when you said, also in the letter, that it would increase the stability of your tenants, what did you mean by that? Do you remember what you meant by that? Not clear. The stability of your tenants, you said?
Well, we're talking about now, not back in 19, not nine years ago.
Okay.
Okay? Now, if it, the project is different now. If you look at it, it doesn't have that 90, 90, what do you call it, angle, okay? Now, it's just like a roundabout, so to speak, okay? And if you follow me on that, okay? So, no, I just, or I mean, yes, it is, it's going to make a big, I think we're going to lose Bailey's as an example, because I don't see how they can operate over there. And they've been there for 25 years. And they're aware of it. I told them what might happen, you know, and they're not too happy about it.
How do trucks get into Bailey's now?
Right now, they go right in off from Maple.
And how wide is that road?
It's, well, I don't know exactly, but I would say it's probably 20 feet wide.
So, this is going to be 22 feet wide?
Yeah, so.
Okay. Just wanted to point that out.
Well, two feet is long, it's a lot. But it also mean, it's, it's just a tough, it's a tough space to get into, the way they put in the, the way to get into it, yeah? So, anyway, that's my opinion.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you on this issue.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, but for the answers of them, I believe I'm going to need the assistance of possibly Rick Hamlin in terms of the engineering perspective. One of the things that was mentioned is that turning into the property will be difficult with regards to the customers of Bailey Springs and a truck from Bailey Springs. Is that what you have said?
That's what I said.
Okay. Mr. Hamlin, can you discuss how, you may come up, can you discuss how the road was designed with regards to truck traffic that may be coming in as it relates to customers of Bailey Springs?
Certainly. And let me talk about, actually, truck traffic in general with regard to the project. I'm going to go to the 17th, 18th, 19th slide here. So, the Crescent Connector project has been designed to accommodate trucks of all sizes, actually, because again, this is a route that provides an alternate route between Park Street and Main for north and southbound traffic. So that at all of the intersections, one of the requirements, one of the things we asked the designers to implement, was to ensure that a WB62, or which is the largest tractor-trailer that you can move on the road, can it be maneuvered through the intersections. And so, throughout the project, for example, turning off Park onto the Crescent, the radii of the curb has been built to accommodate trucks. Also, the radii at Main and at Maple have been designed to accommodate larger trucks. So, there'll be an improvement, actually, with the entrance off of Maple. And vehicles that are coming from the south that wish to go to Bailey Spring and Chassis now can actually take the Crescent into the parking lot and not be required to come to the five corners and make the 90-degree right, which is actually a fairly short radius if you look at that plan on the 17th slide in the deck. So, the roadway itself has been designed to accommodate larger trucks. And with regard to where the location of the curb cut is, initially, we had placed that curb cut farther to the north or to the right on this deck toward Maple. And in conversations with Mr. Clangie's, he suggested or asked that we move it further to the south. Anywhere along that route, once we clear the tracks and have a safe distance away from the rail intersection, that curb cut could be located. And so, if Mr. Clangie's would like it moved southerly or easterly along the perimeter of the Crescent Connector alignment, it can easily be accommodated. Right now, based on the imagery, you can see trucks, there are the entry points to Bailey Spring and Chassis are on, would be the west face of the building. So, that would be the face of the building toward Park Street. And currently, those trucks come in and circulate through the parking lot to gain entrance. And right now, there's parking spaces in front of those doors. And so, what we're proposing would be no different in terms of the parking lot circulation for truck access to get there. And we certainly would be more than willing, as a part of our design work, to ensure that whatever single unit, and I'm assuming that most of the Bailey Spring and Chassis truck work is a single-unit trucks, that we can put turning templates in the parking lot and make sure that they can maneuver in and out. But if they can maneuver in and out of the doors now and clear the parking spaces that are there, we believe that they can maneuver throughout the rest of the parking lot to get back to where the Crescent Connector entrance is. And again, that could be located wherever Mr. Clangie's would prefer it to be, along the alignment.
Thank you. Another, and I believe the last question I have that relates to you, Mr. Hamlin, one of the comments was about the difference, the plans being very different from the original plan to what we have in front of us. The original plan is from the scoping study, so the one with the two shades of blue with a red dotted line, that came from the Essex Junction Crescent Connector Road final scoping study. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That one, I believe you said before, the darker blue northern alignment was preferred because it would have less impact on the properties. And in addition, from the final layout, I believe you said this final layout even further reduced the impact onto the current property, correct?
Yes, and the scoping study schematic, if you look at that, that's figure one from the scoping study that's in the slide deck. If you look at how the Crescent Connector in a northern alignment crosses the tracks, you'll see that that crossing is at a 90-degree or radially along the radius of the curve of the track. So, that alignment would have driven the roadway deeper into Mr. Clangie's parking lot, and then a turn accommodated that would direct traffic toward Maple Street. With the skew, we pull that bow, that 90-degree bend, as you cross the tracks toward the Clangie's property, we pull that back and have a turn of much less than 90 degrees and are able to tuck that corner much closer to the railroad tracks and further away from Mr. Clangie's property. So, in concept, is our current alignment different than this alignment? And again, it's schematic, and I would say, yes, it is, in that we pulled it further away from Mr. Clangie's property by able to, by being able to have that skew intersection as we cross the tracks with the new track crossing.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hamlin. Those were all that I had. Did either of you have any questions?
No.
Actually, don't have any other questions myself. Is there anybody from the public that would like to have any cross-examination of the witness before they are dismissed?
I have one more follow-up question for Mr. Clangie before we conclude.
Yeah, I'll make sure to get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
I don't believe there are any hands raised. Okay? Yes?
Mr. Clangie's, based on the testimony that you just heard regarding the access to Bailey's, would even more of your parking be impacted to allow trucks to enter and exit the building based on the plan just described?
Yes, it would.
Based on the plan?
This one, oh, this one here?
Nope. Based on the layout plan, I believe slide 17 was referenced, the plan as referenced allowed trucks to enter and exit the property, but would impact, but would that in fact impact more of the parking because you'd have to allow access? Thank you.
Any other cross-examination from the follow-up question? Does anybody in the public have any other cross-examination of the witness from the public? Okay. Hearing none, thank you for coming. We appreciate your time today. And just to recap, there is nobody else from the public who wish to come forward to provide any testimony today? Okay?
Mr. President, could I ask that you just review the process of where we are right now and what's going to happen next in the steps?
With regard to tonight's meeting?
Yes, tonight's meeting and further steps.
So, from here, what we will do is, we have received all public comment and all testimony as of today. What we are going to do pursuant with the process of a public hearing for finding of a local necessity is the trustees, our legal counsel, and our municipal manager will enter into what is called a deliberative session, so that way we may privately discuss and deliberate the next steps from here, after which, we will then share what came out of that, any decisions that are made, and further next steps. Did I just check the legal counsel? It didn't make anything more?
Close the jury.
Yes. So, now, there is no other testimony to be received. I will now close the public hearing. I will now close the public hearing for the finding of local necessity and close all the evidence for today's hearing. So, with that being said, we shall now move into a deliberative session in which the trustees, our legal counsel, and our municipal manager will deliberate tonight's session. Everybody else, you may, you may enjoy your day.